The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law is enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies. In accordance with the provisions of the SAC, the East Brunswick Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published at the Board of Education offices. Written notice was also provided to the Sentinel, the Newark, Star Ledger, the Home News Intervune, and the Municipal Clerk of East Brunswick. All Board of Education meetings, with the exception of executive session discussions, are videotaper related broadcasts. Individuals who speak at the Board's public meetings should be aware of these videotaping rules. Good evening, and welcome to our Board meeting. We're going to start tonight, as we always do, with our Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, President Becker. Good evening, everyone. The artwork on display in the boardroom this evening was created by students from Central Elementary School. The art teachers of these talented students are Angeliki Karakoglu and Karen Famalagetti. Danielle DiNino is the principal. As of today, the district has provided 2020 laptops to students in grades 10 through 12. And additionally, we completed our Internet upgrade this past weekend, tripling our processing speed from one gig to three gigs in support of our one-to-one student computer rollout at the high school. On Tuesday, September 24th, the high school held their annual activity fair to introduce students to a wide range of clubs and extracurricular activities offered at the high school. The event was a great success, with approximately 1,000 students in attendance and more than 46 clubs represented. The district-issued laptops were in full use by the students advertising their clubs and signing up prospective members. The sixth grade Hammershold students were treated to a week of great weather for exploring the local ecosystem at Dolanbach's Natural Area. Students toured five teacher-led stations, gaining a deeper understanding of ecology and a greater appreciation for the local preserve. The trip provided hands-on field experiences related to concepts that will be further developed in the Ecology and Succession units of the grade six science curriculum. Special thanks to the sixth grade science team, Michael Reisner and the East Brunswick Recreation and Parks Department for preparing the trail for our visit, and the 100 parent volunteers that helped make the trip a success. Congratulations to Coach Mangino and the girls tennis team, last night, by the way, for capturing their first GMC title since 2011. It was a dominating performance. First singles champion, Naomi Karki; second singles champion, Phoebe Su; third singles champion, Katie Wong; first doubles champions, Anika Sankar and Christina Steiner; and second doubles third place, Adriana Macatella and Lexi Rashkavan. Congratulations to all fall sports on a great opening. EB Athletics is doing well as we start to prepare for more GMC tournaments in October. Wish the teams luck and visit ebnet.org/athletics to find out about the upcoming schedule for Bears games. Churchill and High School parents who would like support with either Canvas or their child's new computer are invited to a parent university on October 7th in the high school media center. In order to ensure we have enough staff on hand to support all who would like to attend, an RSVP is required for the event. On October 20th, the East Brunswick Education Foundation will host its fourth celebrity dance-off at the J. Impact. District celebrities include Board of Education member Susannah Chu, Lawrence Starper fourth grade teacher Susan Misarak, Churchill history teacher Greg Segal, high school security officer Dave Smith, and EBEA president Dr. Dana Zivicky. This is a community event, and to enable more families to attend, EBEF has changed the start time to 3:00 PM and lowered ticket prices. For more information and to start casting your votes, please follow the link on ebef.org. It promises to be another outstanding event. Just a reminder that schools will be closed Monday, September 30th, and Tuesday, October 1st for Fall Recess 1, and again on Wednesday, October 9th for Fall Recess 2. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Valeski. A question for you. I know you mentioned that we had a lot of tech support at the high school in the form of Genius Bars if the kids needed help with the laptops or with the Canvas initiative.
Correct.
What about when they're home after hours, at night doing their homework, or on the weekend when they're trying to do a project or something? Do we provide remote tech support for them?
We currently don't have anything set up as far as tech support from home, but it's something we probably need to take a look at, but I don't know how, you know, we need to determine the scope of what the need would be. Our students seem to be pretty tech savvy.
Yeah.
But it's more of equipment failure or equipment issues more so than the technological operation of the equipment. They've gravitated to that very quickly and are probably going to show us some things that we didn't understand before. But we have had a few isolated equipment issues. They've been solved very quickly. But I think right now we're in this learning phase where if a student does have a technological issue at home, that we're going to have to be understanding and make sure that we can make that adjustment for that student, that that wouldn't be punitive in any way. This is growth for us, and I think there's some things that we haven't quite uncovered. There'll be events that will happen that we'll have to figure out, and then we'll have to develop a response to that.
Or you could just man the hotline all night.
I could. I could.
Okay. Just a thought.
Would you like me to just give out my cell number?
Sure. Whatever works for you.
I can do that.
All right. Moving on, we have a presentation, the Annual Student Achievement Report.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we'll be presenting our most recent student achievement data. As you will see in our presentation, East Brunswick Public Schools continues to do well, especially compared to other districts around the state. As you will also see tonight, there is significant opportunity for us to dig deeper into our subgroup population data. As we use this data to inform our decisions and reflect on what the data is telling us, we are committed to meeting the needs of all learners, and we are 100% committed to ensuring optimal learning environments for every student. So at this time, Mrs. Nicole Tibbetts is going to share our student achievement report.
Thank you, Dr. Bowley, and thank you to the Board of Education for providing me an opportunity to share our assessment results with you. There is a lot of data in this presentation, so if you refer to your binders, you can see it a little bit more close up, and you'll have an opportunity to see it later on as well if you want to dig in a little bit further. So these are our assessment results from last year's variety of assessments, and we'll talk through some of that variety. So first, to start, we just want you to see that East Brunswick Public Schools continues to trend higher than the average school district in the state of New Jersey. But it is interesting to look at our data, though it's significantly higher than the average state of New Jersey, it tends to trend similarly. So where there are dips seemed to consistently be dips kind of across the state with these standardized tests. So this is NJSLA data specifically. I will point out that this year, this past year, we had 99% participation rate of students who were eligible to take the assessment. So that's obviously a significant increase from years past. We've worked on that. Here is the English Language Arts data from the past three years. As a district, when administrators and teachers are looking at their data, they're not only looking at, you know, how third grade is doing compared to last year's third grade and on up, but we also take a look at cohorts of students. So two years ago, when they were sixth graders, how did they do? Last year, when they were seventh graders? This year, when they were eighth graders? So that we can kind of trend and see the trends of a specific cohort of students. You'll see a significant increase, as we did last year, and then even more this year, when you look at our 10th grade English. And that is specifically related to the increase in students participating. We have most of our students participating at this point. Similar trend data for mathematics, the yellow bar being this most recent assessment. And then the state also asks that we share assessment results by specific school. So you see there, the orange bar is what the New Jersey State average is for elementary schools, and then each one of our elementary schools' data. And then the same for Hammershold, Churchill, and the high school. You will notice one outlier there. If you look at the East Brunswick High School English 11, there are only 29 students who took the English 11 NJSLA this past year because it's no longer required for graduation. And so the students were not required to take it this past year. So we have a very small amount of students who are taking it specifically to try to obtain their standardized testing scores that they needed. So that definitely looks different than some of the other schools' scores. And then as we move on to mathematics for the secondary schools, again, we have a couple of outliers. For example, the high school geometry, we have a very small number of students who take that because most of our students take geometry at Churchill, but we do obviously have some students who are continuing to take it at the high school. One of the things we're adding to the presentation this year is subgroup data, and so we have a variety of subgroups to share with you. This one initially is gender. There's a lot to look at when you look at the subgroup data, so I'll just try to explain this one to you. So this is English Language Arts. The dark red line at the top, if we can make that work here, oh, I don't know if it's going to shine that far away. Maybe, yep. That is our girls in East Brunswick Public Schools and how they achieve in English Language Arts. And then the dark blue line is our boys. So our girls and boys, again, trend similarly to the state of New Jersey. We often talk about the girls' gender gap in math, but there's obviously some conversation to be had about the boys' gender gap in English Language Arts, which is certainly a conversation we're starting to have as an administrative team. And you'll be pleased to see that we have really addressed the girls' gender gap in math. So the dark blue and the dark red are East Brunswick Public Schools' data, and our girls and boys do generally similarly well. So there's been a lot of effort put into that, and you can see the improvement. This subgroup data is ethnicity and race, so I know there's a lot of bars to look at there, but it really is fascinating information, so it's worth the look. The blue bars are how our Hispanic students perform in English Language Arts. Red is Asian. Green is black and African-American, and purple is white. I'm sorry. Yes, that's right. And those same colors hold true for mathematics. When we look at our economically disadvantaged students, economically disadvantaged students are determined by free and reduced lunch status. And here we are comparing our East Brunswick economically disadvantaged students to the average economically disadvantaged student in the state of New Jersey. And similarly in math. As we continue on, our students with disabilities. This is the English Language Arts. East Brunswick is the dark blue color compared to the light blue of the state average for students with disabilities' performance in language arts. And here's the mathematics data. And I should note, we have, on all of the math slides, we have a little asterisk next to geometry and Algebra II, just so that you can see, in all of the other subject areas and grade levels, to be considered proficient, you score a four or a five. In geometry and Algebra II, after the first year of assessing, the state changed proficiency rate to a three, four, or five. So that is why you see the asterisks next to those two subject areas on all of the math slides. And then our other subgroup is our English Language learners. This is a little bit difficult to be able to compare East Brunswick Public Schools to the state of New Jersey because we have very small numbers in each grade level. So for example, in fifth grade, there's only five English Language learners who took the English Language Arts assessment. It is important to note that port-of-entry students, so students who have been in the United States for less than one year, do not have to take the English Language Arts assessment during their first year in the country. And so our numbers here are relatively small in most of these grades. And this is the math data for English Language learners. The state requires that we share data from all of our testing sessions, so last year we did have a relatively small group of students who tested in the fall. That was because last year in the fall, these assessments were still considered graduation requirements, and so we were trying to not wait until the 11th hour to give our students the opportunity to take these assessments and pass. That has since changed, but in the fall of last year, that was the expectation, so we encouraged our students to assess immediately and not wait. And so you can see their performance levels in the two required courses. Other than the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment, the district also provides the DLM Assessment, short for Dynamic Learning Maps, and this is for our most significantly impaired students with special needs. And through the IEP process, it's determined that the NJSLA assessment is not appropriate for them to take, and therefore they have an alternate assessment that they take. Again, we have very few students that take these assessments across the district, but these are their results in the three-year comparison. Another assessment that we offer fairly widely is the WIDA Access for Ls, which is an English proficiency assessment for any student who's in or who could receive services in ESL. And there are six different levels that a student can score in. Generally speaking, once a student reaches a level five, they are no longer receiving ESL services. So you can see those students who, at the end of the year, received a five, realistically they're in regular classes for this school year and not receiving special services. And again, if you look at the number of students tested, it really varies widely across the I don't expect you to read this, but I will share the good news with you if you haven't heard it already. The state of New Jersey has lifted that requirement that students must pass the Algebra I and English X assessments in order to be able to graduate, and they have gone back to what it had been in years past, which is a variety of assessments are an option, and you can score certain levels on a whole variety of different assessments, and all of those count towards your graduation requirement. And so for those who have students at the high school who are thinking about this right now, you might not be able to read this chart, but we have it posted in a million places so that you're sure that your student, and we are sure that your student, is ready to Tomorrow, this will be blasted out to all parents, a list of all of the different standardized tests that we administer across the district and the general windows of time. The exact dates have not been finalized in the district for every single grade level, but the general windows of assessment will be shared with parents through an email blast And so we're proud of our results, but we know there's more work to do, and we really are determined and focused on improving those, the data. One of the things that we're doing is we have an equity group, a group of teachers and administrators who are working together to ensure equity across our subgroups and equity in our schooling experience for all students. We've really been focusing on the response to intervention supports that we give to students. One of the things that we have implemented in grades one to three this year is what we're calling WIN Time, standing for What I Need. And so there's an opportunity throughout, in each day, for students to have differentiated instruction that's really targeted within that grade level as kind of an all-hands-on-deck approach so that every student is able to get significant support, whether you're in need of additional support because you're low academically, or you're really a high-flyer and could really be enriched. So that's a great opportunity that's been added. Teachers College is providing professional development to us this year, thanks to a Title II grant, and so they will be working with us on our readers and writers workshop model instruction to ensure that we're really providing the best instruction possible to all of our students. We also are taking a really hard look at both kindergarten and the middle school experiences and ensuring that we're doing everything we can for kind of these unique populations of students. And then, of course, our implementation of Canvas and providing students an opportunity to have access to content more regularly than just during their 40 minutes of school subject areas every day. We do also think will have an impact on instruction. Questions? Go ahead.
Yeah. Nicole, I don't expect you to find this page, but you broke out subgroups, gender, mathematics. There was quite a spike in the geometry for females, 87%. That was the highest percentage on your spreadsheet. Do you attribute that to what you told us just a few minutes ago, that the proficiency scores were changed to three, four, or five? But even so, that's quite a leap.
Well, that's where we want every subject area.
No, I know. I'm saying in comparison to the other subjects, whether it's grade-level math, whether it's algebra, so what is it, and this could be a rhetorical question, I don't necessarily expect you to have this data tonight, but what is it about geometry and with the females that is working so well?
Yeah, so I don't know uniquely for the females, I couldn't answer that for you, but I will tell you that there's a lot of algebra used in geometry. And so what we hear from our math teachers and the math DC and supervisor is that the foundation of what they have in algebra helps them to be successful in geometry and then really kicks them up to be able to understand Algebra II. It's actually one of the reasons why we think there's such a jump between Algebra I and Algebra II as well, is because they get a whole extra year of kind of using their algebra skills. I couldn't answer for you kind of what's unique about girls and geometry, that there's such a significant spike, but that is the kind of information that we're digging in and the kinds of questions that we're asking everybody.
Whatever it is, it's working.
And we want to figure it out so that we use it in other areas and in other grade levels as well.
And the state data is trending higher also there? I'm sorry?
The state data is trending higher in geometry as well.
Yeah, but for us, it was really dramatic.
Really significant, yeah.
One more question, then I'll open to the group. When you talked about the graduation requirements and talked about the availability to parents to help them figure it out and navigate it, are we doing due diligence and being proactive, maybe through the guidance counselors, to be reviewing all current seniors, maybe even the juniors? Who's at risk of not graduating at this point because of these requirements? Because it's still a lot to navigate as a parent, and I'm sure they would appreciate us telling them, this is what you need.
Yes, absolutely. So we start in 10th grade because the first assessment that they take is NJSLA and their PSATs. So we use that really to kind of create our first list, and then in 11th grade, there's another big push with that. Any students who are going into 12th grade without their assessment scores met, take a specific course as a senior first semester to ensure that they get that assessment. This year, I think we have a total of 12 students in 12th grade that we're still working towards getting those assessment scores met.
So we're doing everything we can to make sure that these somewhat confusing, ever-changing graduation requirements are met for all students?
Oh, absolutely.
Absolutely.
Okay, great.
Beyond that, we are working with Genesis, who supports our parent portal, where they can see, where you can see grades and whatnot, to be able to open up. We actually have a tab that's available to administrators and teachers or guidance counselors that is called Graduation, and we can track their graduation progress right through Genesis, including their assessment. Right now, it's not a tab that is accessible to parents, but we've been working with Genesis to try to get that accessible to parents so that they could just click on that tab and really see, my student has taken this many credits for each subject area that they're required to take, and part of that is the assessment result. So we're just waiting for Genesis to make that button available to us.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any questions? Suzanne?
No, just thank you for, you know, all this analysis and data, and I think it's, there's a lot to drill into here. But I was looking, you know, at that particular chart and where there's this gap, right, between New Jersey and East Brunswick, that gap closes on Algebra II. You might have said the reason before, was that tied to our kids were not taking the test, or?
We do have fewer students who take the Algebra II assessment because they don't really need to, right? So that is part of it, but, you know...
Yeah, I just want to make sure it's not something in the way we're teaching Algebra II that is different, that is, you know, something to take a look at.
Right, we love that gap, right? So we want to make sure that that's happening everywhere.
Because it's very consistent across a lot of things, and where you don't see that gap, maybe take a look and see, you know, if there is some underlying...
Yeah, this is the work of the administrative team. As a matter of fact, we, in the summer, and then again yesterday, as an administrative team, we've gotten together to really analyze our assessment data results and ask really hard questions and talk about what does this mean for us as administrators, what's our work with teachers? And so those are the types of things that we are digging into as well. When we talked yesterday as a group of administrators, I said, you know, our assessment results are good, but the way that they are great is in the details, right? And so we have to dig into the details to make sure that we're finding those little pockets where we can make improvement that'll have significant impact on our students.
And as much as no one likes to spend time testing, but it really gives you a tool to diagnose where, you know, there might be some differences. So, yeah, thank you for the report.
Absolutely.
Jeff?
On what you were just speaking about, first of all, yeah, the data's great, and this is providing us an excellent snapshot of where we are or where we've been. So when you're having these meetings of assessment and drill down, what are some of the things being, where do you see something on here that raises an eyebrow, and what is the aspirational goal quantifiably that we could discuss about what you want to see happen next and how you're going to get there?
So I think one of the biggest conversations, and Dr. Bowley can jump in on this as well because this is really her vision, is really thinking about early intervention. And so what are we doing to ensure that students don't fall behind in the first place, right? And so it's, you know, I don't want to say it's too late by the time they're in Algebra, but if there are gaps, by the time you're in Algebra, those gaps have gotten bigger for students, and so we don't want those gaps to happen ever. And so the WIN Time that we're implementing in grades one, two, through three, we think is really a good first place to start thinking about what those gaps are. We are continuing to look at our math program at the elementary level to see if K6, there's a different math program that would provide a different level of instruction and have different results. And, you know, those are, and then the TC instruction is also a big, the Readers and Writers Workshop instruction is also a big place where we're thinking, we believe that some significant in-class with students professional development will have an impact on what instruction looks like in our assessment results.
In addition to what Mrs. Tibbetts said, we're seeing an achievement gap in kindergarten. Some students are entering with extensive preschool experience from an accredited preschool program, some students are not. So addressing that and leveling the playing field with our youngest learners is going to be critical for us. Also, addressing the needs of our transient students. When students come in from other district placements, they may or may not be up to the level of rigor... level of rigor that we're providing here in East Brunswick. So providing supports for those students is going to be important for us as well.
We also had a conversation yesterday about some of our students, when we start to put faces to this data, have attendance issues. And so that's another piece that we really want to dig into, is we know our students who miss a lot of school do not perform well on assessment. And so how can we support getting our students here more regularly so that they can get the high-quality instruction that our teachers are offering? So that is another big piece that we need to address.
It would be interesting to actually take various pieces of data, like percentage of kids participating in extracurriculars, whether it's the arts or athletics, and, you know, again, skew it against the assessment and see if there's any correlation there. I mean, there are obviously endless ways to play with data, and it's fun.
Yes, it's fascinating.
Anybody else have any?
I'd be interested to see if you can even break it down in kindergarten readiness on the kids that go to our ELA classes before they come to kindergarten versus outside.
So our ELA, kind of the first round of ELA students have just taken third-grade parth last year, right? So there's brand, that's brand-new data that we have.
My son.
Yes, my daughter.
Yes.
So, yeah, so that's brand-new data that we have. But those are the types of questions that we are really pushing our, the administrative team to ask, right? Does it matter if they're in sports? Does it matter if they went to our ELA? What are we doing if they've had no preschool experience? What are we doing if they moved here in fourth grade? You know, we can't throw our hands up. We need to know why, and then what are we going to do about it now that we understand where that gap is coming from?
Great, thank you so much.
You're welcome, thank you.
Fascinating stuff.
Thank you, Mrs. Tibbetts.
We look forward to follow-up.
Good job.
Next, we have a public hearing on school-level self-assessment for determining grades under the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights Act, for the period ending June 30th, 2019.
The Commissioner of Education developed a program to grade each public school and school districts' efforts to implement the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights, or the ABVR. This time period was from July 1st, 2018, to June 30th, 2019. A rubric was developed by the Department of Education, and each school was asked to self-assess their school's implementation of the ABVR. The self-assessment consists of eight core elements: HIV programs, training, additional staff instructional and training programs, curriculum and instruction, HIV personnel, school HIV reporting procedures, HIV investigation procedures, and HIV reporting, which is the procedure for ensuring staff report all incidents. And the process is as follows. It is required that the self-assessment be made available for public comment. The self-assessment results must be approved by the Board of Education and submitted to the state by October 31st, 2019. The school district's grade will be the average of the grades of each school in the district, and each school's safety team was charged with assigning ratings based on the criteria available and the documentation supporting each score. In terms of posting of scores, the Department of Education will post all school and school district scores on the New Jersey Department of Education homeroom page. And each school must post the grade received and the district's score on their school's webpage. The school district must post the district grade, which is the average of all the school's self-assessment scores on the district homepage. In terms of scoring, there's a point value given to each one of these indicators. Zero requirements was, means that, zero score means that no requirements were met. Partial was one. If it met all requirements, two. And three would be exceeding all requirements. Some important notes. Based on the 2017, 2018 self-assessment, the areas that required attention were additional training for our Bullying Prevention Climate Committee, or our BPCC, additional training for the mid-year hires and the changes in staff. So how we addressed this was we had our anti-bullying specialists spend two days doing training for their BPCCs, and a training video was created to be used for all mid-year hires and new staff that are hired during the course of the school year. Based on 2018-19 assessment, we did earn a perfect score, the first time in our history here. This is a direct result of the state establishing clear and consistent criteria, which drives our programming and which drives our training. The district total average for 2017-18 was 77.7, and the district total average for 2018-2019 was 78, which is a perfect score. Now, I must say, that doesn't mean that we don't have bullying, it doesn't mean that we still don't have work to do, it just means, based on the criteria that the state gives us to look at our bullying prevention programs and what we do for our training, that was a perfect score. We do have goals for this upcoming year, and our main goal is to continue increasing our safety committee meetings in each building, focusing on school climate and mindfulness. All of our schools in the district met the requirements, each principal signed off on the Safety and Climate Report. It also is reviewed by our supervisor, Danielle Blaylock, and also by me. All evidence is reviewed, and the grade must stand up to the Department of Education scrutiny when reviewed. I do want to also take a moment to thank the Board of Education for your support in allowing us to use Hipster, which is our anti-bullying educational software. Hipster was able, helped us to streamline our paperwork, it also helped us to keep strict timelines, and also helped us with looking at trends that might be occurring in those schools. Let me give you an example of just one of the ways that Hipster has helped us this year. Last year at this time, this is one school's paperwork, this is a school with just a few HIBs, but this is all the evidence that was required for the state. If you recall, last year, I had a table out here, Danielle Blaylock set up all of the buildings, so we had 11 of these. This year, excuse me, Dr. Bolley, all of that information is here, for the whole district, and everything is uploaded in Hipster. So what that does for us is it allows us, our student assistance specialists, to spend more time with our kids and less time doing the necessary paperwork. So I want to thank the Board of Education for that. Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good news, good to hear. Glad Hipster is cutting down on the paperwork and giving you more time with the kids. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this particular item only? We'll still have the regular good-of-the-course to the public, but on this item, the public hearing on the school-level self-assessment. Seeing none, I close the public hearing, and we move on to the good-of-the-course for the public. Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of providing an opportunity to the public to express themselves. To allow for a fair and orderly public comment period, individual comments are limited to five minutes. Protect the privacy of all students and staff. Concerns regarding individual students and staff members should generally be addressed by first meeting with the appropriate administrative staff. Is there anyone who wishes to address the Board of Ed? Please come up to the podium, your name and address for the record, please.
Jack Levitt, Forest Springfield Road, East Brunswick, New Jersey. I am the president of East Brunswick Education Foundation, and I'm here tonight to say thank you. For those of you who were at back-to-school night at the high school, when you walk through the terminal, unless you were incredibly distracted, you noticed that our Hall of Fame is now up and running. It is very, very, very noticeable. When you walk in, it really changes the whole look of the terminal, and it really does honor our Hall of Fame inductees the way we wanted to honor them. It is a set of four very large TVs that are running the BIOS of our inductees, as well as two very sizable posters across them, talking about all the accomplishments. So whether you're going in one direction or the other, you can see who our Hall of Famers are. We couldn't have done this alone. I want to thank the Board for your support of letting us run with this. We brought the idea to you last year, there were some questions, we answered them, and you really have supported us, and we thank you for that. More specifically, the members of the Board and Administration on the Buildings and Grounds Committee for getting our design approved to do this. Dr. Olefsky, thank you for getting all the forces that we needed to get this done by back-to-school night. It was a large task, and without your marshaling all the forces to let us do it, it wouldn't have happened. Jerry Skank, you're here tonight, your team did an amazing, amazing job, especially that last three hours, where we were trying to get those 75-inch TVs.
In a 70-inch slot.
In a 70, no, 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 they were 75-inch TVs. Now, 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 that's not exact rate. They were 68 inches wide, and we had 70-inch TVs. Going out, getting the brackets that needed to be put up, and really tolerating us kicking them on and off to put USBs in without, and then cleaning everything up, vacuuming behind everything. It was really, it was an amazing job, and your guys were there till the very last minute and said, no matter how late we needed them, they would be there. We really, really appreciate it, so thank you. John McMenamin is a genius. If anybody doesn't know that, is he recording this tonight? John McMenamin is a genius. Short of a video savant, we could not figure out how to get the videos running. And we were, the time, the time was clicking and clicking and clicking, we're going by. The Wi-Fi wasn't in the right place, TVs weren't putting them up, John figured it all out. So, John, thank you, I hope you're listening. Two special shout-outs. Dr. Vanilla and I have been in lockstep on this. We really have shared the vision from the very beginning about what the Hall of Fame would look like, and more importantly, what it represents and who should be in there. And we've been working on this together, we're continuing to work on it together, and it just really exemplifies the partnership between the foundation and the administration and how terrific it is, once we're working together. And the last shout-out has to go to Ms. Atkins. Trudy Atkins was our general contractor, I would get updates every morning. She taught me words about construction that I never knew. I, granted, I knew none, but she taught me a lot of them. Every day I would get my tasks, "You have to do this, you have to do that, we're doing this." And it came in on time and looking amazing. So you have an amazing calling there to be a general contractor, if you ever decide you want to do something different.
Dr. Olefsky reminds me I should always look for jobs.
Well, if you do, if you decide to do that for some reason, I will be a reference. There are four screens there right now, again, very big screens, and I, I wish I had, I do have a picture, I could pass it around. We have two inductees right now, we're bringing in three more at the end of the year, but Dr. Vanilla and I were talking about using the other screens to stream high school games, some plays. So if kids walk by and they see themselves on there, they could really pay more attention to what's going on, also it could be very motivational. Just to remind you, the objective of the Hall of Fame is to reach alumni. Alumni are a potential huge source of support for us financially, and if we start bringing some awareness to what we're doing here to them, we can start hoping that they will support us, and we could take on some bigger projects than we've taken on already. I'd like to get from $2 million to $3 million a lot faster than we got from $1 million to $2 million. And the alumni are a huge potential resource to help us do that. So it takes a village, and this village really created a great Hall of Fame. While I'm here, I just want to remind everybody, on October 20th, I'll see all of you at the East Brunswick Celebrity Dance Off, and I neglected to put in the notes at the last Board of Ed meeting that Mrs. Chu is going to be dancing, so please specifically come out and see.
They volunteered to go work for Wendy's after that, and I said, no, that was fine, that was unnecessary, but it's really no problem, please, everybody, it's okay.
Well, I just want to bring extra attention to the fact that you're going to be dancing, so everybody here comes to see you. Can I share the song that you're going to be dancing to, or is that going to be a surprise?
Sure, sure.
Rapper's Delight. Our theme is New Jersey, and Mrs. Chu chose Rapper's Delight as her song, and from what I've heard from people who have seen her dance, she is in it to win it.
All right.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Jeff. Rapper's Delight, who'd have been here?
Sugar Gang.
Go, Susanna. Okay, anyone else wishing to speak to the public? Seeing none, I close the public portion, and we move on to tonight's agenda. Can I please have a motion for item one on the curriculum and instruction agenda? And Lori is not here tonight.
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Sizmore.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hung. Is there any discussion?
I have a question. It sounds like an exciting program. Could someone tell us a little bit more about what they are going to be presented, the Living Voices?
Sure, I can. I have a blurb, if you'll indulge me. So the Living Voices program is offered to our eighth and ninth grade students. In both instances, a professional actor or actress plays the role of a teenager, having to endure living through a terrible time in history. So I'll give you a little synopsis of what the eighth graders are experiencing and the ninth graders. So in eighth grade, the program title is A Right to Dream, and this performance deals with a young African-American male having to overcome the challenges presented by living in the segregated American South during the 50s. And it teaches the lesson of acceptance and exposes our eighth graders to the harsh realities that people faced not too long ago because of the color of their skin. There's also a brief introduction to the performances where students are reminded that the colored-only signs that were hung above most public accommodations during that time not only applied to African-Americans, but to anyone of color living in those areas. And when our students look around the room, they quickly realize that approximately 50% of them would be impacted. Our ninth graders are experiencing a program called Through the Eyes of a Friend, and these students experience the Holocaust through a composite character that is based on the friends referenced by Anne Frank in her famous diary. And the actress will interact with a video where she goes from living a free life with Anne to hiding with her and the Frank family in hopes of surviving the Holocaust. The video shows both Anne and the composite character, Sarah Weiss, at Auschwitz, and then through the death of Anne, and finally the re-release of her diary. This performance does something that no primary source document or textbook could ever do. It tells the horrific story of the Holocaust in a way that commands the attention of our students. Year after year, students go up to the actress after the performance to tell her how powerful the experience was for them. So you are all always welcome to attend either performance. We don't have the exact dates yet, but both will be running sometime in May.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor?
Abstained.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Moving on to the financial services.
Ms. Becker, I, can we remove number seven, once we go maybe?
I'm sorry?
So this is the travel?
It's fine, it doesn't have an impact.
Oh, okay.
So what we're going to do, folks, is when we get, I'm going to ask for a motion for the entire financial services agenda, and when it'll be a roll-call vote, and when it's your turn to vote, please abstain from the item number that pertains to your travel report. Okay, everybody, you're good with that? Okay, so can I please have a motion for items one to 14 on the financial agenda item?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Sizmore, second by Mr. Winston. Is there any discussion? Okay, this is a roll-call vote, will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Chu.
Yes, abstain from seven.
Mr. Sizmore.
Yes, with an abstention on number eight.
Mr. Hung.
Yes, abstain from item number nine.
Mrs. Reese.
Yes, abstain from item number 11.
Mr. Seeler.
Yes, abstaining from item number 12.
Mr. Simmons.
Yes, abstain 13.
Mr. Winston.
Yes, abstain 14.
President Becker.
Yes, abstain item number six. Motion carries. Okay, can I please have a motion for human resource items one, two, and three?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Sizmore.
Second.
Second by Mr. Tred. Is there any discussion? Jeff?
Just a question, to what level involvement will the student counselors have? You know, to what degree, to what depth?
With our Keene University affiliation, Mr. Winston.
With our King University affiliation, Mr. Winston.
Yes.
Mr. Shad. This is an ongoing program, too. This is a continuation of an agreement we've had with them.
So on the agenda, we've requested approval to take student interns from King University. They start out, much like student teachers do, observing, and then they assist with running groups and things. Does it answer your question?
Well, yeah, it doesn't. There's no inconsistencies in all of the work that we put on this side that we're not introducing. You understand what I mean?
I do. They're never alone with students. They're always working under the supervision of the certified social worker or certified school counselor or LD wherever they're placed. So the quality of services that we provide never, never waver.
Thank you, Danny. Any other discussion? This is a roll call vote. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Chu.
Yes.
Mr. Sizmore.
Yes.
Mr. Hung.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Mr. Seeler.
Yes.
Mr. Simmons.
Yes.
Mr. Winston.
President Becker.
Yes, motion carries. Can I please have a motion for items one and two on the staff development agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Sizmore.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hung. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. On the student services agenda, can I please have a motion for items one through four?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Seeler.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sizmore. God, you guys are good tonight. Is there any discussion?
I have a quick question.
Absolutely.
On item number three. So we use Middlesex County College Pool usually, and then in the break, we're going to go to Port Amboy. I'm just curious, was it like based on the rate that they had to take, you know, that far distance? There's one in Old Bridge, there's a Y, it has a pool, there's the Rutgers Pool. Did we pick it because that we were required to because of bidding?
Schools out.
Right. Right.
It's during the college break?
Okay, so then the one in Old Bridge is brand new?
I'm sure it's availability.
It's availability. We've had a longstanding relationship as a backup for this group.
It's just far.
It's a little further, yeah, but the facility is good at Raritan Bay, and we've used it before, and the price is also a good price for us.
Okay, thank you.
People could volunteer to open their pools in the middle of winter so our children could swim in them, but... Thank you, Barbara. Any other discussion? This is a roll call vote. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Chu.
Yes.
Mr. Sizmore.
Yes.
Mr. Hung.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Mr. Seeler.
Yes.
Mr. Simmons.
Yes.
Mr. Winston.
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, motion carries. Transportation services, there's one item tonight, joint transportation agreement between the South River Board of Education. Please have a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Sizmore.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hung. Is there any discussion? All those...
It's no longer called Bishop R., by the way.
I'm sorry?
It's no longer called Bishop R., High School. It's St. Thomas Aquinas. Yes. That's a distinguished alumni of the school.
Okay, so noted? All right, thank you. Where was I?
So no discussion.
Any discussion anymore? No. Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Come to one of our favorite parts of the evening.
Hello.
Our student rep report about our high school. How's our high school doing?
Our high school is doing fantastic. We're like a month in, and it's like fall, except it's not really fall weather, but that's okay. So we just had our back-to-school night, which was super exciting. A lot of parents showed up. We had NHS volunteers, student volunteers, to take parents around just to ease their stress. Yeah. And we had high school band, chorus, and orchestra representatives, like performing for the parents as they walked in just to show a little more of what our arts program is like and what it creates. So that was really nice. It created a really positive environment. We've also been having fundraisers for sports and for clubs, so we had an NHS car wash, a soccer car wash, and we had like teachers and counselors coming in on like Saturday mornings to support us, which was super sweet. And we had obviously like just people who decided to come and support East Brunswick High School because we're amazing. We also have had more Share the Keys presentations, which is what we're doing in partnership with the East Brunswick Police Department. And at the last one on the 24th, we had like 250 attendees, and it's a really powerful presentation. I'm yet to go, but it's very powerful because they show a video of like, you know, a child like going through driving and then like getting into a terrible accident, and it's just a really good reminder that although we're 17, 18 years old and we can drive, we need to be safe and careful and not be texting. And it's a powerful reminder, not only for kids, but for parents to kind of be cautious because we're handling this huge machine and we're still kids. So yeah, it's had a good effect on students and parents in that sense of like reminding them of that. We've also had the activity fair, which we had pictures of before, and the computers were super helpful because instead of having these annoying sign-ups, people would just go on the computer and say that they want to sign up. And a bunch of kids attended, a lot of people got involved. I know clubs like recruited up to like 75, 100 people just on that one day during that one hour. So that was super cool, and it gave kids like some time to just kind of walk around and find where they belonged if they haven't probably found that group yet. So I think that's really helpful. We have opened a bear store on Fridays during lunch. It's open, it's like kind of outside the cafeteria, and it's super cool. We just sell like bearware and like other things that, like folders, pencils, that kind of stuff that you might need in the middle of the day. And it's nice that we have that again because we didn't have that for many years. We've had meditation Mondays started, so they're running in the morning, and it's basically where kids can just go in and meditate and relax, and it's super helpful just because, you know, it's the beginning of a stressful week, and it's a nice way to relax before classes start. We've also, we're preparing for Respect Week, which is where we're just going to remind each other that, you know, respect, tolerance, acceptance, that's all very important, get everyone involved in that. We had our first principals' council meeting, which was great, so a lot of student leaders were there just to convey information about what they want to do, what their clubs want to do, different sentiments around the school. And we had presentations from the East Brunswick Education Foundation about the initiatives they're going to take and from different honor societies and clubs, and we're just trying to use that to grow our EBHS One initiative of all working together instead of being like separate entities. And then we are working on using Canvas more and more and implementing that in the classrooms. So these computers have been like super helpful. We're just working out like the last few glitches, and it's going well, and Canvas is great, and teachers and students are learning together how to use it and use it the best way in classes. So certain teachers have figured things out, and they're sharing that information, or students are telling teachers like, hey, you guys are doing this, but we want you to use it this way. And everyone's working together, and it's creating like a really great learning environment. So yeah, that's it.
Great report.
Thank you.
Remind me, college applications, what do they do by Thanksgiving?
I'm submitting my first few on October 15th, and then my next few November 15th, then I'm done. It's a good feeling.
Okay, we should have like Relief Day, the day after they're due.
Yeah. On October 16th, we actually have a senior seminar day because that's the day that 10th and 11th graders take the PSAT. So for people with October 15 deadlines, it's a nice day after to like relax and recoup.
Meditate.
Meditate.
Yes.
Great, thank you so much. Are there any committee reports tonight? Susanna.
So I apologize, I walked in a little late. Dr. Woleski, did you talk about the Unity Walk in your remarks?
I didn't, no.
You didn't? Okay, so on September 18th, the township held its third annual Unity Walk, and Lou was also a member of the Human Relations Council, who was the sponsor of the event, so he was closing, he provided closing remarks. I was sort of the emcee, I just kind of opened it up and naturally started on time. But I want to really thank the staff who came out to support, the members of the Board of Education, the students who came out, including those from Sources of Strength and the National Honor Society. One of the students actually came up to me and said, you know, I'm from the National Honor Society, and we're really excited to be here. So it was really, you know, nice to see the students out there. And I'm sure I'm forgetting somebody, but it was very well-attended and, you know, just a very nice concise program, a nice walk around the lake, and just promoting unity and respect and understanding, just bringing the township together. So thank you very much.
Yeah, we had some student readers from Sources of Strength and some other of our student leaders who came out to help us that night. Dr. Bowley was there, Ms. Atkins, and several other people were there from our district, and it was really well-attended, it was a beautiful night, and yeah, thank you. You were a terrific emcee, by the way, Susanna. Great reviews from everyone.
You were a great closer.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I have a question.
Absolutely.
On things. Dr. Woleski and Lou, obviously. Question about when we have off-site activities for students. I know we send people bowling to balling alleys, swimming, obviously, those are coach-attended. When there's an optional activity with a team, go to an off-site facility, do we vet the personnel at the facility?
You mean as far as the people working at the facility that are employed by the facility?
It's an optional?
Are the kids alone with that?
Coach do not go.
I have to research, Mr. Seeler. I can't honestly answer your question if we do that, but I will get an answer for you.
Thanks.
Barbara?
I just wanted to mention and to reiterate what you had said about Canvas. It's exciting, the possibilities with Canvas. Also, the parent portal was introduced. Of course, I went to look, so... But the calendar is great. You can see all the different, so you can put, and actually, my friend texted me because she knew I would go on, so you could have all the kids on one calendar and see all the, you know, for planning purposes, you know, when the tests are and things like that. So kudos to everybody who's involved with that, the whole district, it really, it's moving along well, and the teachers and the students are working together to make it the best experience. I had a suggestion, I don't know if it has happened already or not, but is there a way for the teachers to see the tests? So for example, if you're a math teacher in eighth grade, can you see what other eighth grade teachers are doing when they're giving their tests so that you don't give it all on the same day by mistake?
Mrs. Tibbets, would you mind?
So there has been conversation about that. The only way that that can happen right now is if teachers share access to their particular pages, and so we anticipate that will happen more readily when we end up introducing Canvas maybe next year or the year after at Hammershold, because they really are a house model. But every Algebra I teacher to share with every English 8 teacher, then you have all of those, you know, maybe like eight other classes on your particular dashboard, I don't think has worked yet for them. So there is a way to make that happen, but it's probably Canvas 2.0 in our learning curve.
That's something.
Thank you. Yeah, absolutely. We have talked about it, for sure.
But Mrs. Reese, in spite of what, you know, the answer Mrs. Tibbets gave you, that my expectation was we'd be at a certain point by this time in the school year, and we are far ahead of where I expected us to be through a lot of hard work and dedication and just a lot of genuine interest from our students and our staff to engage in it. So it's been really exciting to watch it, but I've got to tell you, this was a well-planned, well-executed rollout, and I appreciation to everybody in the administrative team who did this, and Mrs. Tibbets, who was the lead on this, and it's just, it's gone beyond expectations.
Well, it's very impressive, and the Genius Bar, they always have people to help. I got to see the Genius Bar, and it's a beautiful little area, and very nice, and the kids are very excited about it, so thank you.
On the subject of Canvas, I have both the pleasure and displeasure of having two students at the high school right now, and one a sophomore and one a senior, and with that comes along this steady stream of their friends coming through the farm, and some feedback that I've been getting has been pretty consistent, and this is something we discussed as a board prior to the launch of Canvas, is they use very colorful words to describe the connectivity and bandwidth issues going on at the high school. And I learned some new words, but most of them mean frustration. So what have you heard? What are the thoughts to increase that? Apparently, by introducing all of these connected devices has definitely taxed the system.
Okay, so I'm no tech expert, so forgive all of the language that I will use, but I do know that for the first several weeks of school, we were maxing out our connectivity. And this past weekend, we tripled our bandwidth.
Our internet speed and our bandwidth.
Internet speed.
That's a word.
And since then, I've heard that word before.
Yeah.
Since then, we are really in much better shape. So hopefully, this weekend, when you have everybody over, you're hearing that this week has been better than it had been for the past couple of weeks.
I'll inform the consulting team and let them know, yeah, please.
Invite Nicole. Invite Nicole to come on.
So... You go and I'll... So, Mr. Winston, one of the things that we do in the IT department, we have a monitor that shows the traffic throughout the district, and we can watch the high school. And you can watch at just about 7:25, 7:30, we go from here and we spike up to the, at least before last weekend, to our plateau at one gig. But one of the things I want to make sure that the public knew is it just isn't our student devices that we have given them. Every student who has a personal cellphone, who comes onto our Wi-Fi, is also part of that equation. So we have been monitoring the traffic after the upgrade, so this week, we've been operating under a three-gig environment. We haven't maxed out yet, but we have been at 2.7 gigs, so we are already up there. But we have not plateaued, and so I'm hoping that this week, students saw a lot better performance than they did the week before. Thank you. You're on.
Okay, anybody else?
First question, Dr. Woleski, we can't keep the students' phones off the Wi-Fi. They should all have cell service.
That when they go on to high school, Mr. Simmons, they can log in under the guest Wi-Fi.
Can't we stop that?
We could throttle it down at certain times, and that is an option we could consider, but we are looking at where we are in terms of traffic right now with increasing the gig speed.
Yeah, but I just wonder if we have to give them access altogether if they have